Thank you. Call to order, please be seated. Motion to reconvene the open council meeting. Been moved and seconded. All those in favor, opposed, carried. Motion to adopt the minutes of the open council meeting held on May 29, 2017. Been moved and seconded. Councillor Dollywell.
Your Worship, I have a question amendment to the minutes. I note that, in fact, I had spoken with the clerk on this. There's a mistake on one of the motions. If you would allow me to, I would like a motion to correct the records, your worship.
Second. All right.
The motion I would like to make, your worship, is that the minutes of the open council meeting held on May 29, 2017 be amended to show that Councillor Dollywell voted in support of the city manager's recommendations in regard to the manager's report, section seven, item 11, rezoning actions number 16-19, proposed single-family residential. Worship, pass the motion. It was, if it's seconded, then I will just quickly, and it was recorded erroneously. I had voted in support of it, and I have spoken with the clerk. I'd like to correct these in the records place.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Ready for the quest? Yes? Councillor Calendino.
On the same item, your worship, and again, picking up the error, it shows that my name twice in the voting section, and I think probably for the second time, might have referred to Councillor McDonnell, who voted against, not me. I've written down his voting twice.
Aren't we giving you two votes anymore?
Unfortunately, you took it away.
And you were actually in opposition, and so you weren't recorded, Councillor McDonnell? All right, so that was a typo. We don't need to amend that. All right, you ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed, and carried. All right, we'll move on now to adoption of the public hearing zoning minutes held on May 30, 2017. Oh, sorry, we didn't give the original minutes. We dealt with the motion to amend, but on the main motion? Yep, all those in favor, opposed, carried. Now, motion to adopt the public hearing minutes.
I'm sorry.
Yep.
If one or the other had to reconsider, do we do it arising out of the minutes? Or when do we do that?
New business.
Okay.
All right. Oops. All in favor, opposed, and carried. Motion to hear the delegations. Been moved and seconded. All those in favor, opposed, carried. And Ms. Zoe Luba has postponed her delegation to the next council meeting, June 26, so she won't be appearing here tonight. And our next delegation is the Burnaby Public Library Board. Ms. Lorraine Shore, the Chair, and Ms. Beth Davies, the Chief Librarian, are here to report on our library's activities. Welcome. All right.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Corrigan, members of council. My name is Lorraine Shore, and I'm Chair of the Burnaby Public Library Board. With me this evening are a number of trustees and library staff. The trustees include Katie Elkins-Jang, Chris Dong, Sheila Pierce, Jeffrey Yu, and Pietro Calendino, who's here in another capacity as well. The library staff include Tina Artuso, Sharon Norserigo, Alison Ramirez, Deb Bruschansky, Winnie Tan, and one of our teen librarians, Rachel Chong. And I'm also joined by the Chief Librarian, Beth Davies. 2016 was an important, energetic, and fun year for the Burnaby Public Library, marking 60 years since we opened our doors at our first branch in South Burnaby. We celebrated our 60th anniversary throughout the year with our patrons, offering special programs and initiatives. As part of our 60th anniversary celebrations, we invited library patrons to tell us in their own words why they loved their library. We were overwhelmed with the response. We received 662 entries. In March 2017, we brought some of the winning patrons to our branches to take their photos and hear their stories in person. Their faces and their words are on the pop-up banners which you've seen outside the council chambers and will appear throughout this presentation. Burnaby Public Library's collection of books, DVDs, databases, and other material remain the foundation of our service. We believe that all people are readers and learners, and we look for ways to connect with people who may not yet see themselves as readers or learners. In 2016, Burnaby patrons borrowed more than 3 million items. If people had to buy the books and DVDs they borrowed, it would cost $65,480,461. I asked our librarians to find out what was the most checked-out book in 2016. It was the latest installment in the Diaries of a Wimpy Kid series, hugely popular with pre-teen readers. The most checked-out adult book was When Breath Becomes Air, a moving memoir by a neurosurgeon who has terminal cancer. Popularity isn't the only measure of the value of our collection. I'd like to highlight one of our collections, My First Language Kits, for you. My First Language Kits provide families with materials and information to support home language development and cultural identity in their early years. We offer kits in 25 languages, and each kit contains picture books, a parent resource guide, and, where available, audio or video resources. We are regularly thanked by families who treasure the opportunity to share their heritage language with their children. Our 2015-2018 library services strategy includes the goal to promote items within the library's collection that are unique and special, and weird and wonderful. Each Friday, library staff select an item from our collection and pose it in a fun way. Called Bookface Fridays, this feature is now an established part of our social media presence. We've even had authors of the books we feature comment on social media. Bookfaces often celebrate anniversaries and special months, such as Women's History Month, Earth Day, or the 50th anniversary of the release of Sergeant Pepper's Lonely Hearts Club Band. Bookfaces continue into 2017. The bookface that you can see behind you pictured, commemorated the historic handshake between Trudeau and Trump.
Quite the handshake.
Library programs are a wonderful way to increase opportunities for informal learning in our community. We offer diverse programs to adults, teens, and children, and partner with many organizations to expand the range of programs that we offer. In 2016, more than 70,000 people attended programs and events at the library, an increase of 8% over the previous year. I'd like to highlight just a few of the programs we offered. In 2016, we began offering coding for kids programs to reflect and support the change in curriculum in elementary schools. We were a key partner in the inaugural Burnaby Festival of Learning in 2016, working with SFU and other City of Burnaby departments to offer programs such as forensic entomology, walking tours, and archaeology of the Franklin Exposition. Deputy Chief Librarian Deb Thomas and Community Outreach Librarian Kelsey Chaban, who were active in coordinating the festival, can't be here tonight because they were in Prince George today, presenting a session about the festival. One of our most popular programs is Librarian's Choice, where our skilled and well-read staff recommend books on particular themes. One patron told us he always finds new books to read at the program. It turns out that he's a library trustee at a neighboring municipality. Our bilingual English sign language storytime builds literacy skills in families with deaf children. One dad talked about how far his son's language development has come, how focused he is now in storytime, and how he retells a story through signing when they bring the storytime books home. He talked a lot about pride, how proud he is of his son, the program, and the library. More than 1.6 million people visited Burnaby's library branches in 2016, a 4% increase over the prior year. Thanks to the support of Mayor and council, Cameron Branch got a facelift in 2016 with brightly painted walls, new carpets, and renovated service desks with improved technology and accessibility. The children's area is now graced with a beautiful mural painted by Jamie McCarthy, one of our talented librarians. In 2017, we're continuing with renovations to the second floor of the Bob Pretty Metrotown Library. This renovation adds new meeting program and collaborative study rooms to meet the demand by community groups and individuals. More than 2,200 groups and individuals used our meeting and group study rooms in 2016. This fall, we'll be increasing our opening hours on Sunday at all our branches to meet the demand for families and others on this busy day. Again, thank you to council for providing the funding to make this happen. People come to the library for all sorts of reasons. Many of our regulars come to research, to apply for jobs, and connect with friends and family via the Internet. We support their needs with computers, Wi-Fi access, and expert help from our staff. And we know that patrons really appreciate the in-person help they get from our librarians. In 2016, staff answered more than 200,000 questions, a 2% increase over 2015. Our services don't end at our library walls. At our pop-up libraries, small satellite libraries we bring out into the community, visitors can browse, borrow, and return materials, learn about library services, sign up for a library card, and get help from library staff. As a nod to our 60th anniversary last year, Burnaby Public Library committed to offering 60 community outreach visits in 2016. We exceeded our expectations and visited more than 100 community events and celebrations, schools, and other civic locations throughout Burnaby. We created new community partnerships and strengthened our existing ones, and we were able to reach citizens who can't always visit a library branch. In 2017, we're excited to continue bringing library services to our patrons in our beautiful city. We're using pop-up libraries and locations such as food banks to connect with community members who may find it difficult to visit the library. Most importantly, pop-up libraries give us the opportunity to interact with Burnaby residents outside our library walls. One thing we want to highlight are the teen services, which has grown and flourished in 2016. Our two teen librarians can provide diverse collections and programs to teens in our four branches and out in the communities. In 2016, we offered 180 programs and outreach visits, and attendance at these programs increased by 20%. Last year, we also reached out to teens and asked them their opinions on library service and about what really mattered to them in their daily lives. What we heard surprised us. We found that many teens are struggling with stress and anxiety, and are looking for ways to relieve stress through reading, sports, and other activities. In response, we held teen book club programs and developed yoga and mindfulness sessions. In May 2017, we built on this foundation by working with teens to plan a youth mental health program for Mental Health Week. In September, Mayor Corrigan and other dignitaries handed out 721 Summer Reading Club medals to a crowd of enthusiastic children. The medal ceremony and pancake breakfast are a highlight of the Summer Reading Club every year. All children are welcome to join the Summer Reading Club, including those who are new to Canada or are very young children who haven't started reading on their own yet. In 2016, in an effort to reach families who may not have known about the club, staff worked with teacher librarians, recreation staff, and settlement workers. These visits led to increased participation in the 2016 Summer Reading Club, and we are very proud to welcome these new families into Burnaby's community of readers. The Summer Reading Club closing ceremonies were just one highlight of our 60th anniversary celebrations. As you've heard, we also participated in the first Burnaby Festival of Learning and increased our community outreach activities. In honor of our 60th, we also increased each borrower's free requests from 30 to 60, a practice we're pleased to continue in 2017. The book with the most requests in 2016 was Harry Potter and the Cursed Child, followed closely by The Girl on the Train. We finished off the year with BPL 60, a week-long program of special retro-themed programs, including crafts, book talks, movie screens, screenings, and storytimes. The week also saw the return of the analog library, where people could explore old technology, old perhaps the sum, like cassette tapes and rotary telephones. On October 22, we held a Patron Appreciation Day in each of our branches with activities, giveaways, and cakes in every location. A few patrons made it to all four of our branches that day. In September, we held the Big Birthday Bash at the Bob Pretty Metrotown Branch. Taking place after the annual Pancake Breakfast and Summer Reading Club Medal Ceremony, the Big Birthday Bash was a day filled with entertainment, food, and fun. Throughout the afternoon, there were food trucks, music from Burnaby's diverse communities, and family-friendly activities. There was even a chance to try your hand at Quidditch, the game made famous by the Harry Potter books. Mayor Corrigan also unveiled Evangeline and Baby Bebe, new public art by sculptor Joe Fafard. We've received very positive feedback about the art. The night ended in spectacular fashion with an outdoor movie screening and amazing fireworks. Thank you, Mayor Corrigan, and members of council for your participation in our anniversary events. We hope you enjoyed celebrating with us, and in 2017, we look forward to celebrating 125 years of Burnaby and 150 years of Canada with you. I'd like to end with one more entry in the I Love My Library contest. At last year's annual report presentation, Mayor Corrigan presented his entry in person to Board Chair Sheila Pierce. The mayor's words really sum up the value of the library to the Burnaby community. I love my library because it entertains, educates, and encourages the people who make up our diverse community. On behalf of the board, I would like to acknowledge our dedicated staff who continue to deliver exceptional library services to the citizens of Burnaby. I'd also like to acknowledge outgoing board members, David Alley and Satnam Joel, and welcome incoming board members, Chris Dong and Ada Poon. Mayor Corrigan, in 2016, more than 90% of the library's funding came from City of Burnaby taxes, as approved by city council. On behalf of the library board, the library staff, library donors, and the tens of thousands of library users, I'd like to acknowledge city council's ongoing support of the library's collections, programs, services, and facilities. Without your consistent support, we would not be as successful as we are. And I want to go off script for a moment and make a couple of other acknowledgements. One is to Sheila Pierce, who was my predecessor as Board Chair. She fortunately has stayed on for one further year, and she has been a role model for me as Chair, and I appreciate the support she has given me. I also want to talk about our new Chief Librarian. Most of you may be aware that Beth joined us in October of last year. She has been a joy to work with, and I've worked with her a lot. She's a huge asset to our library, and I think Burnaby is lucky to have her. The 2016 Annual Report is available at each branch and online at bpl.bc.ca. Burnaby residents can also call the library to have copies mailed to their home. The Chief Librarian and I will be pleased to answer any questions council may have.
Thank you, and one of the things you didn't mention was that we had lost Chief Librarian Adel Toner-Rigala to retirement last year. I can remember when Paul Whitney left us after an illustrious career with Burnaby, that all of us said it's going to be very, very hard to replace Paul Whitney. And then Adel came in and just did an absolutely fantastic job to bring the library to the next level, brought her own touch to the library, her unique touch, developed programs that reflected her view and vision of where the community was going to go. And so I'm very pleased now that, and again, I doubted, how are we going to replace Adel Toner-Rigala? And we've managed to go out and find another great chief librarian who has come in and hit the ground running, who is again taking her vision forward with where our library will go over the next years. And while the public might not notice the individual changes that come with our librarians, they see continuity and consistency in the delivery, I know, and the library knows, that each of these librarians comes in with a view to creating the library that is absolutely one of the best in Canada. And so I'm very pleased and proud that the board has been able to find such great chief librarians and have such great staff. You know, we have a volunteer library board that does an absolutely terrific job. I want to thank all of you for the work that you do. It's a labor of love in the truest sense of the word. People who come to be library trustees inevitably fall in love with our library system and become its greatest advocates. And I think that's, and it's certainly, I think, one of the most enjoyable jobs we have for volunteers in the City of Burnaby. People are challenged by the job, but also they're fulfilled by the job, which I think is one of the most important aspects of volunteerism. And then they find out that we've got an unparalleled staff working in our libraries who come to work each day, dedicated to making sure that the citizens of our city get absolutely the best service. So it really is, we're lucky to have a library system that we have, and we continually are up at the very top of readership across Canada. And here in a multinational community where you have 100 different languages and people from all over the world, it's an incredible challenge and an incredible opportunity to be able to deliver services to that multinational community. I, again, want to give accolades to our library. It's easy to support the library because you do such good work.
Thank you very much.
Now, Councillor Calendino.
I just want to thank you, your worship, for reading all my comments.
Stop letting me look at your notes.
I know that it's not easy to follow your interventions at meetings like this, but I will try. And, you know, the Chair gave us some of the relevant information, some relevant statistics that the library enjoys. And she also spoke about all the programs offered in the libraries, and I think I alluded to some of those last year, so I'm not going to repeat myself this year. But we also always give our accolades to the staff at the library, and they deserve it. But this time, I want to take a bit of a turn and give my accolade to the board members. And I can say, in the last year and a half, year and a half that I've worked with them, I can certainly say that I'm very, very pleased to be working with a bunch of knowledgeable, I won't call you a bunch, I will call you a group, a group of knowledgeable, open-minded, committed, and, I think the operative word is, engaged, number of individuals that put their best forward and make sure that the function of the library is tops in Greater Vancouver. And we know, we have the best library system that one can want in this city, and it shows. Everybody is very pleased. The library is a refuge for thousands of people that go and enjoy all kinds of things, books, tapes, videos, movies, et cetera. And it is due to these board members that put out the vision together with the Chief Librarian, some senior staff, and the vision for the future is very good. And I know that the Burnaby Public Library enjoys a very positive reputation in the community, because I can testify, along with Trustee Elkins-Jang, that when we went out to the business community last year to get some funding for the celebration of the 60th anniversary, we found no objections whatsoever. They opened their doors to us, and they said, what can we do for you? So it means that even the corporate world out there is thankful of what the library's doing in our community. So I'm very pleased. So congratulations to the board member, congratulations to the staff, and let's keep going the way we are and keep improving.
Thank you, Councillor Calendino. And a previous councillor sitting on the board is next, Councillor Anne King.
Well, I want to begin by welcoming Beth Davies as our new Chief Librarian, and you've been doing a great job. I've been hearing lots of great things from her libraries, from her patrons, and as well, a special welcome to your new Chair. That was a great report, and I just got really excited about going to the library again and missed all the times that I had, the years I served. I just want to say how our public library has really been progressive with a board that really works hard, has been taking in the comments that the public has been given. Our library isn't just a wall, a building with four walls, but it has programmings. It responds to public. It has community rooms where the public can come and use a room. It has programs like Lego Club and movies and movie lights at the civic center. It's actually a place, and a safe place, where the public comes to exchange knowledge, to be curious. And even though with the progress of our technology and people using iPads and phones and watching movies or listening, books are still a main staple of our curiosity and reading. And we have kept up with the time, and we have still, we as in, I feel like I'm still part of the library board, but you have kept up with the time, and the library has continued to be a popular place in our community. So I want to thank the board for that. I have a few questions about, well, actually, I don't have a few questions, but if you could help explain this to public. So I have people asking me, well, the library is a quiet place to study, but we really want a place where our friends could study, because now we have more density in our community that people are in small apartments. And I know we have a really special place that we built three years or four years ago at Bob Pretty Library, where we have a small study room. Many people who are not from the Metrotown area would not know this space. If you could tell us a little bit about how big this space and how it's used. As well, my other question is to one of my favorite programs when I was on the library board is My First Language Kits. Mayor Corrigan has said that we have over 100 languages spoken in Burnaby, and I know when we first started Language Kit, we had about 20-some-odd languages, and now we have 25. Are there plans to expand these Language Kits, and how often are they used? As well, I'm just curious which one is the most popular one at this point. But I want to end this by just saying kudos to all the librarians who are here today. Just by the sheer number of the library staff, the number of trustees that are here today, I know that we have a very strong board. And so my quote is one that I really love, is And so my quote is, is one that I really love, is Google can bring you back 100,000 answers, but a librarian can bring you back the right one. So thank you so much to the library board for all the work that you have done. Of all the civic places that we have, the library would be my favorite one to visit. Thank you.
And Beth, maybe you could tell us a little bit about, not just the Bob Pretty branch, but how those rooms that we have, those community rooms are used around our libraries?
So it's one of the biggest challenges we have is to balance that need for the traditional use of the library where, where it's quiet space and people want to study and then to balance all the other things that go on the library that might be really noisy. So at Bob Pretty Metro Town right now, we have two quiet study rooms on the second floor and those are mostly used on a first come, first serve groups by small, basis by small groups. So, so three, four people studying in a group together. The renovations that are beginning this year will expand that to three study rooms, but also create a program room on the other side of the floor. And what we hope that will do is, is two things. One, provide some extra programming space, but when it's not being used for programs, we can also use it as a quiet study room. We also have a program room on the main floor of Metro Town, so usually that's Storytime, that's Author Readings, that's a whole bunch of other programs. But when we were doing some renovations earlier this year, we opened that up as a quiet area. So when the bit of the library that's usually quiet became noisy, then the bit of the library that's usually noisy could become quiet. We have one program room at McGill, so again, a balance of programs and some silent study. And at the Tommy Douglas Library, we're lucky enough to have two different program rooms so, so we can really have a, a bigger range of uses at, at Tommy Douglas.
Is, is there a time limit in, in using those quiet study rooms?
There is not.
Oh.
What's number one in the languages?
I don't know. Yeah, I honestly don't know. I'll have to look that up and, and get back to you councillor King. But yes, it is something that we're interested in expanding.
And when I talk about 100 languages, it's often, those language, languages include a number of dialects. I think there are 65 dialects in China that are utilized. So while people commonly speak Mandarin, many will also speak the dialect from their home province. And so when we look at the number of languages, some are not in common usage, but are still protected by the people who carry those languages with them as they come into Canada. But I'm, I'm impressed that there are 25 that are common enough that they're being utilized regularly for people to teach their children their, their home language. I, that's very interesting. It shows you we're becoming more and more cosmopolitan every year as people are coming in. It's very impressive. I, I think that probably that's the biggest challenge for our libraries is to deal with a non-homogeneous population. It's so much easier to deal with homogeneity, you know, where everybody is reading similar books and they're working under a similar language. But we take a range of people who are new Canadians, who are starting out learning to read and speak English, who are getting help from our libraries to become much more sophisticated and become mainstream readers. And I think that's another incredible accomplishment. Those open doors allow people to become educated into Canadian society. So oftentimes you're serving a number of roles and not the least of which is integrating immigrants into our community.
Sweet.
Well, thank you very much for being here for presentation. It's always nice to see you again and I hope, Beth, that you're enjoying the Burnaby library system.
I am very much.
You came from the big smoke in Vancouver. It was, it was exactly the opposite. As Adel Tona Regala came from Prince George to Burnaby, you came from Vancouver over to Burnaby. And, and I think that we benefited by being able to take those different approaches and be able to improve our library. So thank you for the work you're doing. And Lorraine, as always, thank you for your continuing work with the city. You've got a-
You're very welcome.
-great board of trustees there. I, I know that they're a really keen group that you've got, not the least of which is councillor Calendino, so.
That's true.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The new chief librarian, it's a step up to come to Burnaby.
See, I wouldn't go there. All right, a motion to resolve into a committee of the whole to consider reports. All those in favor, opposed and carried. The first report is a certificate of sufficiency, resident initiative coming from the city clerk. Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, opposed, carried. The next report is the Financial Management Committee and councillor Johnson, you're the chair.
Your worship, I would move regarding Microsoft software licensing agreements. I would move that council approve the award of three-year contract to Microsoft Incorporated for a total cost of $2,149,378.96, including both taxes in the amount as outlined in the report. Second?
Second, the motion.
Your worship, this is a report authorizing, this is basically purchasing of updates of existing software used within the city such as Word and other Microsoft products. Microsoft is slowly converting over their software, is making some of their older issues redundant, requiring upgrading to new software and converting some of them over to a subscription basis. So this is, this is the, the costing of that, of that change for the city.
Right, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, opposed and carried. Moving on to the Sustainable City Advisory Committee, councillor Dollywell, please.
Thank you, your worship. I will move on behalf of the committee that the council received the 2016 annual solid waste and recycling report for information. Very quickly, your worship, I, we all know in the city of Burnaby, our solid waste collection program, a recycling, and recycling program has, was initiated a few decades ago and it's, it's pretty good management model for, for handling solid waste in our region. There's approximately 110 regular and auxiliary staff members. As we know, all the service, solid waste collection is in-house collection service and this is supported by our own people in the city, which is, which allows us to, to manage the program well and respond to, to the inquiries from our public, your worship. In, into the programs, we know, as you know, the curbside collection is, is the most, the stellar program that we offer, has been offered for many, many years. This is a, an opportunity for, for our citizens to make sure that, that the diversion of, of waste program doesn't increase, but rather goes into recycling. And from the, from the numbers provided in this report, your worship, every year, there's an improvement in terms of how much material gets recycled and reused and, and, and less and less is going to the solid waste or garbage, as we call it. So this, 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 this report also touches on the fact, your worship, that this year, starting in April, we have moved to two-weeks collection, every two-week period of collection for, just for garbage. We continue to collect. Recycling and green win, collection happens every week. And this, this, the, the change would allow us first of all to encourage citizens to, to increase diversion of material because obviously the garbage going to be picked every couple of weeks. There's an opportunity to move a lot more stuff into recycling. We'll also have a, a very consistent day for picking up garbage, which will be only changed when, when there's a statutory holidays, but people most, holiday, people go back to the normal day. And also this allows us to enhance our services and, and the large item collection and, and public space recycling, litter and picking up the abandoned waste. So that, that has allowed us to move our resources to, to respond to other requests that come from people for bulky item appliances and mattress collection, or also just cleaning, just providing cleaning and, and on ad hoc basis where litter has been twned. Program also continues for multifamily, industrial, commercial and institutional material collection. This has been, the city has been increasing more and more multifamilies and, and others do add to our services. Much has been said and, and I be here, all accolades from folks about our public drop-off facility, particularly Burnaby Eco Center, which, which receives all kinds of material, a nice place for people to visit, a very pleasant environment to drop off and, and also facility to take back some of the recycling material. That is the responsibility of, of the producers. We're continuing to, to increase our public space recycling, that is the, at all public facility, where more and more abandoned material is recycled in terms of rather than going to garbage. So that has been improved internally at, at the city level, your worship. There is a, a program at the city Burnaby with, with I Recycle at Work, which is right through with the department and had, continues to support diversion. The Green Team also continues to, to come up with some of the things which have reduced a lot of the production of newspapers and printed reports. In 2016, we were approximately diverting about 54%. That's about 18% recycling, 30, about 36% green waste and the rest goes to, to the garbage. Worship, this is a, a, every year an improvement is taking place throughout the, the city. Thirty-five, thirty-five thousand households receive this service, your worship. And, and I'm, I'm pleased to say that we are working very successfully towards meeting our regional goals of, of having diversion reach our corporate, our, I guess, regional goal someday. So we are adding every year to a bit more to divert the garbage away from, and to recycling, your worship. So that's my report for the, for this, this year, just to review of the solid waste and recycling, your worship.
Councillor Calendino.
Thank you, your worship, and thank staff for the great report. And of course, we already heard this report, the committee meeting, and I pointed out one thing that perhaps staff needs to do a little more work and, and that is the, the diversion in the multifamily, mostly the vertical buildings. I think we do very well in the low-rise multifamily, but the vertical, the high-rises, it's a bit of a challenge and the challenge is partly the physical structure of where the, the waste bins are placed, partly our pickup, partly because we don't service all of the high-rises ourselves. But I, if you look at page 15 and the graph there, even though our organics, it is growing in the pickup and the multifamily, I think there is still a challenge that most people are still not diverting organics from the actual garbage collection, which may cost us money when we go and take it to the dumps. So our staff probably needs to do a little more work and perhaps the director of engineering can comment on that to what the plan for the education is for the next few years.
It's always been difficult for us, the multifamilies, and you're right, it's a little easier with the townhouse developments, but the condo developments can be difficult. Mr. Gough, how are we doing in our efforts to try to get people into recycling in, in those buildings?
Your worship, you're correct. It is a little bit more difficult, so we rely a lot on our educational tools for those buildings. One of the biggest problem with high-rise multifamily is the fact that you're somewhat anonymous. You know, in, in single family, we in some way monitor what goes into the bins and you can actually identify where the contamination is coming from. In the low-rise multifamily, it's, it's somewhat similar, but, but not quite as bad as in a, in a high-rise where people really have no idea who's taking what to the garbage chute. And so it's really, really hard. So we do do a big drive in education there. Whether we pick up or not, that is notoriously, not just in this jurisdiction, but in everyone, a very difficult group to, to get fully on board in terms of the full diversion. So we do do strong education and, and our team does go around to the high-rise buildings, but that's unfortunately the only real tool right now that we have and we, and we'll continue to do that.
I can say councillor Calendino, that there is impact in regard to the materials that are being brought to landfills or to the incinerator in regard to the Metro Vancouver bands. And so a, over a percentage of materials that are not allowable are costing the, the processors money. In our case, it costs us money and in the private sector, it costs them money. So it's a disincentive to be able to have those things. And eventually it's going to be passed on to the, to the customers in those buildings that they are now paying higher rates as a result of it. So, you know, it's kind of a blunt object and we're hoping education will do it before that becomes a serious problem, but it's going to end up costing a lot more money to dispose of your garbage if in fact you aren't recycling.
That's exactly the reason why I raised it, your worship, because it does cost us money and obviously then it will cost clients.
And it is going to be passed on. Councillor King.
Thank you, worship. I just wanted to highlight one of the programs that we have and we continue to highlight that, which is the bulky item appliance and mattress collection program and abandoned waste material service. The city of Burnaby offers free picks, pickups if residents do call them. And I want to encourage everyone to, to use these programs when needed, rather than putting mattresses or bulky items like sofas in the ravines because it costs more staff hours and time and in labor just to get things from the ravines or the highways or the back lanes or the cul-de-sacs. If it's not your property, but if it is your item, I'm going to encourage everyone to be, really be responsible in how you dispose of these things. We have a wonderful place called Still Creek and it is very accessible and staff were very friendly. But as well, people from the sanitation are very happy to accommodate things that do need pickup. So give our sanitation a call rather than having to dispose it because it is free in the city of Burnaby and I want to encourage everyone to use this, rather than passing it to somewhere else and upping the cost of what it should be. Staff could be otherwise providing better services in other areas rather than trying to clean up what should have been their, their job. Thank you, worship.
Yeah, and I, I just wanted to mention to staff that I, I understand now that Suri has, has changed their rules to have a significantly higher penalty for disposal of any goods into park areas in their city. And I, I was wondering if staff could have a look at that because I think that we want to move to best practices. And if there is the capacity to have much higher fines if you are caught putting materials into our ravines or leaving them at the end of cul-de-sacs like some people have done, I'd like to see that we're putting in maximum fines to be able to make sure that there is a big penalty for being caught. I, I think people need to be discouraged and if other municipalities are pursuing it more aggressively, then we should be trying to meet those standards. It's important for us to, to be leaders in that regard. There's nothing more atrocious than for people trying to keep their city clean and then finding out that one of their beautiful parks has been soiled by someone dumping a load of garbage. And I want to know that we can prosecute that to the fullest extent. Councillor Volko.
Thank you. Just very quickly, your worship, I don't know how many years it's been since the province introduced the MMBC program here. And I remember around the lower mainland when it came in, there was a great deal of outrage. Now, this report triggers in me a question to our staff in regards to what is our relationship with MMBC? We were, we were told a number of things at the inception of the program, how it was going to be beneficial and how it would be a cost saver and everything else. I'm wondering if we have any studies at all from Metro, from MMBC, from the various audit functions apparently that our trash, our waste is audited by the truckload and that. So I'm curious, I would like to see some of these reports and as I say, I would like to know exactly what has gone on with that program because even the private sector had some real concerns in regards and then all of a sudden. some real concerns in regards and then all of a sudden, MMBC has fallen off the face of the earth. It's as if it never ever came to pass. So I'd like to know exactly what's going on in particular, if we have any information, MMBC and the city of Burnaby and if there's anything, any other info, I'd love to see it. Thank you.
Mr. Goufs, is it anticipated that you're going to be bringing forward a report in regard to that?
Your worship, we haven't, I mean, it's essentially combined in this, in the fact of our overall activity in recycling, but I'm happy to bring a memo just to explain exactly what has been happening. I think the biggest reason it's fallen off the radar in a way is because it's functioning right now. We haven't had issues. We're getting paid properly as we should be. The audits haven't indicated any big issues with Burnaby's contamination rate, so we haven't been accruing fines. And as a whole, I think it's working at least as good as was allowed to through the plan it had. There has been some issues, as you might know, on the provincial side that the paper producers, particularly the newspapers, haven't joined yet and there is a bit of an issue with that. But we haven't had much of an issue municipally, so that's why you're not hearing much about it, but I would be happy to bring a memo forward just to explain exactly what has been our activity with MMBC over the last two, two and a half years. The biggest one that I think is lagging, in our opinion, but again, it hasn't been high on the radar, was their responsibility for the materials they cover in public spaces. And we've, as you know, with the three bin solutions at bus stops, have stepped up a little bit and taken some of it on ourselves because it's clear that that's not rushing ahead because the newspaper is the biggest component of it. But I'd happily bring a memo forward to you and just at least explain what our business dealings have been over the last two, two and a half years.
And council isn't entirely adverse to good news. If in fact something's been working occasionally, it's good to report it. The rest only want to hear bad news. As mayor, I want to hear some good news. All right, you ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed, carry. All right, moving on to item four D.
Item four D, your worship, recommendations are that council receive this report for information purposes and that a copy of this report be forwarded to Mr. Lloyd Struck, environmental health officer, Fraser Health Authority in Abbotsford. And, your worship, this must be a night for the annual reports. The next one is on the annual, twenty sixteen annual drinking water quality report. In twenty sixteen, a total of twenty-six, two thousand six hundred sixty-four routine drinking water sample were obtained in Burnaby for bacteriological analysis. Of these sixteen hundred, sixteen oh five samples were obtained by city staff from sixty-three dedicated sample location throughout the city and the city works system and ten, one thousand fifty-nine samples collected by Metro Vancouver staff. I mentioned that, your worship, to illustrate that how closely and diligently the quality of drinking water is monitored in the city by our city staff as well as Metro. And in reviewing the results, your worship, it has noted that our water, city water, Metro water continues to be the best in terms of our quality in the, in the rest of the country. This report shows that it's meeting all the, all the regulations that are from the B C Drinking Water Protection Regulation, meets or beats all of them. In fact, to the extent that, or there's hardly any thing that we could, we want to follow up. In particularly, I just give you an example, ninety-nine point samples of turbidity of less than one N T U, which means practically, and this is way below the threshold, and generally that's mostly concern of people, that doesn't look very clear, et cetera, but it's mostly very well received service. As far as the ECOI or other things that are colliform, the water continues to be well above the expected range of acceptance from the, as per the regulations, your worship. So there would be a notice in local newspapers informing the public regarding the availability of this report. Your worship, we don't print a whole lot of reports, but they are available on our website and there's a fair amount of data that people would, people probably would be interested in. May I just add very quickly, which I mention every opportunity I get, that the water in our region is the best water that anyone can find and it's delivered at the most economical manner we can think of. Single-family homes, on the average, spend less than two dollars a day for both receiving and as a liquid waste as well, taken away, delivered and taken away, less than two dollars per day. Two dollars, you know, if you can go buy a bottle, that's just, that's two dollars probably right there. But this is unlimited amount of water that people use for basically for personal use as well as other things that they want to do and that's done delivering two dollars and in condos, it's even less than a dollar a day. So it's a great product, great service. Kudos to our staff, Metro, to continue to provide this very precious commodity when we compare ourselves to the rest of the world where people really can't find water for even drinking water and we have such an abundant amount of clean water. And let's use it. Let's not go around and buy those plastic bottles, et cetera, because that really isn't doing any good to the environment, particularly the way those bottles are disposed. So I understand that Metro Vancouver is carrying on with their awareness program and hopefully people who will look at this report will be satisfied enough that our water continues to be the best in the world.
It's one of the, one of the issues that I talk about most frequently to the young students that come to visit Burnaby City Council as part of the school program. It's ironic that people will complain on an ongoing basis about the price of gas and then they will pay more for a liter of water than they pay for a liter of gas when they could get that water free from their tap at a higher quality than is in the bottle. So I often compare this and say, so you had a free gas tank out in your backyard and instead of saying, I'm not going to use that free gas out in my backyard, I'm going down to pay a dollar forty at the gas station. Well, what we get over and over again is people making the same kind of decision at home, I'm going to go out and buy bottled water that has been sitting in plastic for who knows how long, absorbing the petroleum products that are in the plastic and they've got water that's coming from a fresh source in our reservoirs and lakes to their home and they're refusing to drink it. It makes no sense at all. And I think some of it is that people come from other parts of the world and they're just not used to having access to clean water through their taps. And so it's a, it's a big educational effort on our part to teach them that in fact, this is good quality water. And we're working against the big multinational corporations like Nestle's and Coca-Cola who want people to believe their water is not of a good enough quality because they want to sell dollar fifty bottles of water to citizens. So, you know, anything you can do, any members of the public, anybody out there who can help to educate people on this issue, please do. Please tell people, don't waste your money on bottled water. You are using up petrochemicals to create that plastic, you're getting lower quality water and then eventually, at least some of those bottles aren't ending up in recycling, they're ending up in our lakes, our rivers, our stream and our oceans. So people can really contribute a lot environmentally by just making a wise choice to not spend money on something they can get free from their tap. Exactly. Counselor Volco.
Just very quickly, your worship, I don't know that free, while we can say free, but this is actually a teaching moment for everyone in the region, especially from the political end. When we hear from our constituents grousing about the amount of taxes that they pay for this, that or the other thing without any context as to why they're concerned about that. This water is free, but in the interim, Mr. Mayor, you were the chair of the Water Committee, I believe, at Metro for many, many years and you did a good job there, but in that period of time, billions of dollars were spent in this region in order to bring water to the taps and in order to clean that water up and in order to eliminate the turbidity. So it's also an opportunity to let our citizens and residents know that you got the best water quality in the world because there's various reports now in the press about people that are coming here from around the world to move to Vancouver, they use as the example in Toronto, but Vancouver in particular, sometimes are quoted as environmental refugees. They're coming here because they're aware now of water quality, air quality, environmental quality in the region. Maybe we should stop printing some of these reports or if we do keep printing them, maybe we shouldn't be as proud of our achievements. But I do think that we miss an opportunity when we don't use reports such as this to explain, yeah, we spent billions of dollars for you to be able to get that water coming in. And I think, I don't think most people would begrudge that type of information coming to them.
No, and I agree with the way you framed it because one of the few things you still have that's free in our country is water and air. I don't know if they're going to find a way to charge you for air, I'm sure that Nestle's and Coca-Cola have a plan, but you know, the water is free. What costs money is getting it to your house and making sure we can take it away from your house. But the water itself, you can use as much as you need, being respectful of the fact that sometimes of the year, we are going to be in a position where we shouldn't utilize all of our resources. But ultimately, people can utilize water at home, they can put it in a bottle, take it away, they can, they can do exactly what these companies, the big multinational companies are doing because they're taking exactly the same water, putting it in a bottle and selling it to you for a dollar fifty, you know. So the insanity of it always, always is, you know, it piques my interest is how advertising can make people do something against their own interests, but it works and it continues to work. So, you know, I think these are really good opportunities for us to tell people that, no, your drinking water is the best in the world, use it. All right, you ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed and carry.
Next report, your worship, is also from the Sustainable City Advisory Committee and the recommendations are that council approve the proposed program for World Rivers Day twenty seventeen at Burnaby Village Museum. Number two, that council authorize expenditure of World, for World Rivers Day twenty seventeen in the amount of four thousand dollars for advertising and promotion as outlined in this report. And that a copy of this report be forwarded to Burnaby Parks Recreation Culture Commission, Mark Angelo, World Rivers Day Chair and Founder and Representative of the International River Foundation and the Outdoor Recreation Council of British Columbia for information purposes.
Second, please.
Very quickly, your worship, this, just a little bit of a trivia, that the first B C River Days were held in nineteen eighty and was created by River Advocate in Burnaby, by Burnaby resident Mark Angelo. In nineteen ninety-three, the city of Burnaby became the first municipality in British Columbia to proclaim B C Rivers Day. And the World Rivers Day, of course, is, has roots and that's what the UNESCO did in terms of taking the idea from B C Rivers Day and turned it into a World Rivers Day. Just very quickly about what's happening to celebrate the World Rivers Day in Burnaby is the, there will be, this would be done in, celebrated on Sunday, September twenty-four, from eleven A M. to four thirty at the Burnaby Village Museum. This is done with the cooperation of Burnaby Village Museum staff, city of Burnaby Planning Department and Mr. Mark Angelo, who works on what the, on the program. What people would see, your worship, is the, there's a streamside tour, which is a guided tour of Deer Lake Brook on the village museum grounds led by a local ecology expert. And then there's a First Nations program. The last year, Coast Salish educator hosted an Aboriginal medical plant tour on the museum grounds for the World Rivers Day. And there will be film screening, short films created by B C I T. Rivers Institute will be shown on a loop at the Central Park Theater in the village museum. And there would be a map of waterways of Burnaby, which is an aerial photo map of the city to show waterways where salmon spawn. And the copies will be available. And of course, there will be a children's parade known as the Nylon, Nylon Zoo, which means the children would be participating in a real parade while dressed in animal costumes. It will be all located near the carousel. Committee has requested four thousand dollars from the boards and committee and commission's operating budget and this is to promote the World's River Day at Burnaby Village Museum. Worship, that's my report.
Thank you. No further discussion, you ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed, carry.
And the final report is the next report, which is the Response to the Force of Nature Delegation on Solar Energy. Recommendations are that the council receive this report for information and a copy of this report be sent to the delegation representing force of nature. Worship.
Second, please.
Second.
Thank you. And in this, earlier this year, the Environment Committee had received a report that, and a delegation, which was then submitted, then was forwarded to the, forwarded to staff to respond to, your worship, this report, response to the delegation's request that was made around having solar energy promoted in Burnaby. This report goes quite into detail to explain, your worship, that the, that yes, there are many ways that currently solar energy is being used in Burnaby. At certain places, a number of places have been listed in this report and particularly city's Bonza Recreation Centre was retrofitted with a solar hot water system to heat for the public pool. But one of the things that was, this report mentions that currently in spite, there is no program that either precludes or encourages use of solar energy program in Burnaby, your worship. It's very much left to the, to the, to the public and also as well as the developers who build their buildings to utilize what's available in solar energy. So city's approach is to first continue to work with the programs that we have created that generally is focusing on reducing our energy consumption. We have not set any, any policy in terms of specific energy types, but the first focus continues to be for us is to reduce consumption of energy corporately and continue to promote, as your worship. So that's the report.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Counselor Calendino.
Just very simply, your worship, because one of the things that this group was asking us is to pass a bylaw that would make the design of houses from now on ready for application of solar panels, construction. And staff is reluctant to do that and I concur with staff's position in that by doing that, this would increase the cost of already very expensive houses in our area. And for the moment, I think we should simply continue with the way we are doing things and perhaps in the future, if ever housing construction should come down, maybe it's something that we should be considering because obviously we want to ensure that we minimize our G H C's production in Burnaby and this would be one way of reducing gas emissions.
All right, and I think there'll be continual monitoring of this to watch the progress. I think there are some new ideas that are coming out, there's some new production, there's reduction in costs. I think there's a lot of things coming down the line as this industry grows and I'm hopeful that they continue to provide incentives to the industry to be able to ensure that they develop the newest technologies. If we put nearly as much money into the solar energy industry as we put into fossil fuels, we would be making a significant difference much, much quicker. But at this stage, we find that the preponderance of investment is going into old technologies and there certainly isn't a level of investment going into the new technologies that offer us a solution in the future. So again, it's hard to impose upon your hard to impose upon your average homeowner the cost of a system that is not going to be efficient from an energy point of view or from a financial point of view. So, we've still got some things to beat to get there, I think. And planning staff are always cautious about putting inordinate demands on what are already expensive housing options for people. So, I agree with you, Counselor Calendino, that they're doing the right thing at this point, but I think it's important that staff and this committee are monitoring where this is going and at what stage we can jump on board. All right, you ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed, carried. Moving on to City Manager's Report. Item one is to provide council with the expert panel's findings and recommendations on modernization of the National Energy Board. Been moved and seconded, and thank you, staff, for bringing forward this report. We discussed this item earlier and asked staff to report back to us. I am impressed that the recommendations meet so many of the requests that were made by the city of Burnaby and by many of the other intervenors who had utilized the process over the course of time. Almost everything that the committee has said has adopted the kinds of issues that we had raised and had requested assistance in. It's fairly clear that the process is one that is controlled by the industries and has continued to respond to the industry's view of how to proceed. It has not provided an easily navigatable system for your average intervener or even for more sophisticated intervenors like the city of Burnaby. And so, these recommendations offer a great deal of alternatives in ways that you're going to make the participation more meaningful and that you're going to separate out the issues that involve energy policy and the idea of how we conduct ourselves in regard to energy across Canada and the regulatory function that you need for an actual pipeline. So, it goes some great distance in trying to accomplish a lot of these goals. The problem is that exactly what they're proposing would have worked well for us during the initial process. And in fact, Prime Minister Trudeau had indicated throughout the election campaign that they were going to restart the process under a new system. I would have felt much more comfortable entering this system that's proposed than we did in the one that we had. So, in essence, as our lawyer said, is we're the last victims of a flawed process. And now, everybody seems to recognize that the process was bad, but that doesn't change the decision that was made that impacts our citizens, which is worse than ironic. It's a travesty, you know, it's a tragedy that we weren't given the opportunities that are now proposed to be able to really confront the issues that are important to our community and in fact, should be important across Canada. Counselor Calendino?
To yours, Your Worship. I wanted to say that, given that the NAB process was fundamentally wrong and against the will of the people and that it had basically lost perception of transparency, the most scathing recommendation and the first recommendation that we see in our report is that this panel recommended that the NAB be scrapped. And, you know, there can be any stronger statement than that, and that it be replaced by two different agencies, which would probably work a little closer to the, with the people and with indigenous people and considering indigenous rights and Aboriginal treaty rights as well, which was lacking during the NAB process.
I know, and you don't often get really good coverage of going to these panels, but I appeared in front of the panel on behalf of the council.
Yes, I was there.
And they were very receptive to the things that I was saying, and it included a staff report that was more comprehensive. But it's obvious that they took what we said to heart and have tried to implement a system that's going to be more reflective of Canadian values and a consultation process that works. And certainly, First Nations have received much different treatment under the panel's recommendations than they received with the National Energy Board. So, again, it really is a tragedy that we were the last victims of a process that everyone recognizes was wrong from the beginning. All right, you ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed, carried. Item two.
Question.
This is to inform council on the city's 2016 corporate greenhouse gas emissions inventory and fulfill the annual climate action revenue incentive program grant requirement to report on the city's plan and progress toward meeting the city's climate action goals. Counselor Johnson?
Good report. It not just outlines the process for provincial government rebate regarding climate action, but it also lets council and the community as a whole know our benchmark levels for greenhouse gases in the city and where we can improve. I think this is really good. I would hope that this comes back on a reasonably regular basis so we can see whether we're making progress or not.
Ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed, and carried. Item three. This is to update council on the recent launch activities for the Environmental Sustainability Strategy. Right, is there any discussion? Question's been called. All those in favor, opposed, and carried. Item four is to respond to the requests from the Burnaby Arts Council regarding their submitted proposal for a new art gallery. I have been contacted by the Burnaby Arts Council, saying they would like to review this and get an opportunity to appear before council. Now, normally, I wouldn't be concerned. It's a report for receipt, but because it's an issue that they brought forward and requested specifically to have a report prepared, I think it would be respectful to table this report to give them an opportunity to review it and to appear as a delegation if they choose to do so. All right, so we're going to table and perhaps they, now, what I do want to make clear is that it can't be too long. We should be able to get this onto the agenda, but they looked at a few weeks to be able to do that. And maybe we could coordinate, Mr. Pelche, with them. I think you've been in contact with them, have you? And we could coordinate and say, here's a good date for you to come in and be able to comment on it as a delegation. Okay, so we're going to, Counselor Jordan, before the tabling motion. You want to speak to it when we get it back? All right, so there's a motion to table on the floor. All those in favor, opposed, and carried. Item five.
Item five.
This is the building permit tabulation report. This is information on construction activity as reflected by the building permits issued for the subject period of May the 1st to May the 31st. All those in favor, opposed, and carried. Item six is a road closure for the St. Helen's Terry Fox Run.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried. Another road closure for the 24th Annual Alta Vista Park Celebration.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor, opposed, and carried. Item eight.
Second.
This is the Library Capital Bylaw Request. And after that presentation, I'm sure no one's going to vote against it.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, and carried. Item nine is contract award for the Swan Guard Track reconstruction.
Second motion.
It's been moved and seconded. And, Sir Ellenwood, just for my sake, as we're advancing this project based on our money, are we guaranteed on receiving all of the partnership money on this?
Uh, Your... No, sorry. Excuse me if I remain seated, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we've got agreements in place now with both donor organizations. I'd like to show my appreciation to the city solicitor with that.
You know that he's spreading responsibility there.
He gladly took it, you.
That's right. Well, I don't know, but the city solicitor wrote the agreement.
She had to deal with my scrabble at first.
Way to stand up. Are you ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed, carried. Item ten.
Question.
This is to obtain council approval to award a contract for the capital re-roofing program. Questions called. All those in favor, opposed, carried. I just want to mention, this is a result of our asset management policy and the fact that we now have a team looking after our assets, that we're putting these kind of roofing replacements out as packages, and it ultimately is saving the taxpayer money, you know, and I think that's a very positive element that's arisen out of that. It also means that we're doing our maintenance in a way that's extremely well organized and enables us to protect our assets.
The Metro Town Library Roof is in the list.
It's in there. All right. I know, they've just got nothing but money coming here. Ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed, carried. Item eleven.
Question.
This is to obtain council approval to award a contract for sewer mainline replacement at Burnaby Lake Rowing Pavilion. Questions called. All those in favor, opposed, and carried. This is to obtain council approval to award a contract for the Northeast Burnaby Roads and Intersection Improvements Project. Questions called. All those in favor, opposed, carried. Item thirteen. This is to obtain council approval to award a contract for the South Burnaby Roads and Drainage Project. Ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed, carried. Motion to the committee rise and report. All those in favor, opposed, carried. Motion to adopt the report of the committee. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, opposed, and carried. Moving on to bylaws. Counselor Jordan.
It is indeed, Your Worship. So, for first reading, I would move that Burnaby Zoning Bylaws Number 13764, 13765, 13766, and 13767 be now introduced and read a first time.
Second motion. Been moved and seconded. All those in favor, opposed, and carried.
For first, second, and third reading, I move that Burnaby Highway Closure 13770, Burnaby Capital Works 13771, Burnaby Capital Works 13772 be now introduced and read three times.
Second motion. Been moved and seconded. All those in favor, opposed, and carried.
For second reading, I move Burnaby Zoning Bylaws 13751, 13752, 13753, 13754, and 13755 be now read a second time.
Second motion. Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, opposed, and carried.
And for third reading, reconsideration and final adoption, I move that Burnaby Zoning Amendment Bylaw 13672 be now read a third time, reconsidered, finally adopted, signed by the mayor and the clerk, and the corporate seal affixed there, too.
Second motion. Been moved and seconded. All those in favor, opposed, and carried.
And that's care, Hayden. Your Worship, third reading, so we can start to build that seniors' housing in South Burnaby.
Yeah, I saw that there was the demolition going on and more units of senior housing is really a good thing for the community. All right, we're moving on to new business. Council, I have an item that I'm going to bring back for reconsideration. That's rezoning reference 16-19, a proposed single-family residence originally considered at the May 29th regular council meeting. So, I have the authority of mayor, as mayor, to bring that back for reconsideration. So, it's on the table. I understand there's some additional information that councillors would like to receive in regard to that issue. We can refer it to staff, receive that information, and then it will come back to council in order to make a decision. Counselor Jordan.
Oh, I was on another matter.
Counselor McDeNell.
Yes, Your Worship, there was some information I had received from the applicant in that, and I'm not sure that everybody had got it. So, I think it should be included in the package when they bring it back, such as the results of the survey that was done for the residents in the area and things like that. Just to review it to see if there's anything else we want to do with it.
All right, I would take that for the staff to report back. There was a, apparently, some neighborhood consultation that was done at the direction of our staff that wasn't before us or considered at the time the original application was defeated. I additionally was concerned that it was at the maximum allowable, but I received some information, and I'm not sure whether it's accurate, but I would like you to check that out, that it's below the maximum allowable, that it was within a, it was less than the full requirement. And Counselor Johnson, are you on this issue?
Back. I'm wondering if staff can give us some photos, some site maps that are a little bigger than the one inch by one inch that were in the report last week.
Yeah, I don't think that the photos were really fair in being able to do it, but you may be able to get those from the owner who may want to make some more contributions. But we want to ensure that we're entirely fair in the way we've dealt with this. Counselor Calendino?
Oh, regarding the photos and the design, it is my understanding that the design of the houses, even though it's bigger than what would be made under R3, the R3 allows more, but given the size of the lot and given the location of the lot and the sloping, it's not really obstructing views of neighbors. It's not conflicting with the neighborhood as mine. And I went and drove by there and saw the lot and the neighborhood, and it seems to me that would not be an obtrusive sight to have that out there.
Well, I'm not going to reargue it at this point, but we'll get the information that's being requested, and if it wasn't available at the time and it might have influenced our decision, if in fact, that information was available, the fair thing to do is to make sure that we get that information and that council then can decide. All right. All right, so I'll get a mover and a second on the motion to report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, opposed, carried. Staff, if you could get this back so that it's still possible for this proponent to be able to meet the July public hearing date. I expect we should be able to cover that information. We're too late for the June public hearing, but we can make the July public hearing, and I wouldn't want to see it. If we are going to advance it, I wouldn't want to see it miss the next date because I understand it's been in the system for a while. All right, now, there's another item under new business?
No.
Counselor Jordan.
Thank you, Worship. Just a couple of things arriving from the purple pages. Item B, Mr. Lutz is writing to us about property taxes. The staff comment says there's been some changes to the homeowners grant program and that banks are not accepting paying that and stuff, which is impacting us. Could I get like a memo and some understanding of what they've done? As you know, that is a bit of a bugbear fee, homeowners grants. And also, item L, Mr. Hatton writes about Kinder Morgan. He asks us a question about whether or not we should be moving away from the RCMP. And I don't see anything on that letter to say that staff or anyone else is going to respond. So, perhaps the mayor could respond. The letter is addressed to you, Mr. Mayor and council.
Okay. Madam Clerk, if I could get a response prepared in regard to that issue. We've reviewed that issue as have other cities, and we should give a response and indicate what issues we think would be raised under those circumstances.
I know. And also, I'm so upset. I went, drove down Marine Way yesterday, and those lands that have forever in our city being, at this time of year, growing beautiful and wonderful vegetables right at the corner of Marine Way and Nelson are six foot high with weeds. So, that's two years of summer growth that has gone by the wayside because of whoever bought those lands and purchased them and started to dump fill and trash. And so, we had the work stopped, but it's the province now that's supposed to get something happening and remediate. happening and remediate the situation. And as far as I can see, the earthmoving equipment, the rocks, the fill, the everything that was brought into, to, you know, that huge piece of agricultural land is still the same way it was last summer and the summer before. And it's just, it's so sad to see right beside Garden Works, what used to be Market Gardens is now nothing but, as I say, four-foot highs of weeds and piles of rock, and there's been no change since we, I think it was two years ago, Mr. Pelche, we got them to stop whatever the heck they thought they were doing on A.L.R. land, but nothing's, nothing's moved, nothing's been remediated, and it's, and it's just sitting there. And so, I wonder if we could make some sort of formal complaint with the province to say, what are, what's going on? Why is this not being, you know, fixed?
Yeah, we, we need to deal with those issues, and one of the hard parts is trying to find a mechanism. I, you know.
And find who's in charge right now.
We've been talking about, there seems to be no compunction about having a vacant house tax, you know, and they've discussed that kind of issue, you know, and people have asked whether we're going to try to do that. But, you know, there should, from the province's point of view, be a change in taxation if you're not utilizing agricultural land for the purpose it was designated for. Why get a tax break on land if all you're doing is holding it? So, maybe we should be thinking about how we advance that kind of an argument to say, either you use it for agriculture, you lease it to someone for agriculture, or you're going to be taxed at a higher rate if all you're doing is holding and speculating, which... Yeah, yeah, exactly. That's what's happening in Richmond, is that there, we, we acted on that very early on from a planning point of view, but Richmond's caught in a very desperate situation now. Surrey's acted on it, I think, but continues to be a problem where you're getting agricultural land designated and it becomes really a twenty thousand square foot house. I don't know if they've hit thirty yet, but I know they've hit twenty. And the other issue is, is one that's important. I agree with you, Counselor Jordan. It's a shame to see a piece of land that you saw in agriculture for so long.
Yeah.
Now grown over because someone is, there's some issue that we don't know about, and maybe staff can let us know what that issue is that isn't allowing it to be farmed again. Because those are some of the most dollar-wise productive farms in British Columbia.
In the world.
Yeah. Yeah, so it seems a shame if it's not being farmed. All right, is there anything else? Motion to adjourn is in order? Oh, wait, I have one more item. I forgot to bring this up. I wanted to bring it up because this is an award of excellence, excellence in policy planning and in the city and urban areas, which was won by our planning department along with Golda Associates, Integral Group, and Modus for the Burnaby Environmental Sustainability Strategy. And that's another award for one of our plans that's been provided. Mr. Pelche, if you could send our, our congratulations on to the staff who worked so hard on this and to our consultants who worked with them, is that it's tremendous to receive a planning institute award. I don't know if it makes up for all the abuse they had to take over that time, but it certainly is nice at the end of the day to be able to be recognized by your peers for having done an exceptional job. So, our congratulations. All right, and with that, a motion to adjourn. All those in favor, opposed, and carry. Thank you very much to everyone with us tonight. Thank you, council and staff.